Call the Bucks Board Planning Board meeting to order for Tuesday, August sixth, twenty twenty four. Uh, roll call.
Uh, George Hansen.
Here.
Terry Doty is absent. Uh, Jay DeRoz.
Here.
Mark Missluson.
Here.
Crystal is absent. Richard Peterson.
Here.
And Michael Heda.
Here.
Okay, item two, review and acceptance of minutes of the meeting on May seventh, twenty twenty four. Anybody have any discussion on that or?
I wasn't here, so Josh should have stayed because I don't know.
No.
I've had an opportunity to review the minutes and I don't see anything wrong and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Accept. Second.
Motion made in second to approve the minutes of that meeting. Any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Accepted. Uh, Chair's report, there is no Chair's report this month. Code Enforcement Officers' report.
Uh. Most of my time has been taken up with legal issues with the Spring Fountain. There's been depositions and lots of legal reviews of thousands of documents and it's been pretty much a nightmare month and hopefully that part's behind me and now we wait for them to schedule a court date. And other than that, I don't have any news.
Okay, anything else to report? Any other good news to report?
Uh, twenty seven Main Street Engineers called me today and they are a little behind schedule because they had a really hard time getting a surveyor to do the work that they needed done over there, which is completely believable because everybody I know that's needed a surveyor has had those same problems.
Twenty seven Main Street, is that what you said?
Yes. Yep. Um, but they're moving along now and headed in the right direction. We should be seeing an application. Probably not next month, but maybe at the very least October, so. And while I'm thinking of it, we're gonna have to move September to the following week because it falls on Labor Day.
Okay.
Where's that, Orland?
No, Labor Day's.
Labor Day's on Monday.
Labor Day's always a Monday.
Yeah, that's Orland, never mind.
Okay. Oh, disregard.
Unless they've moved Labor Day to Tuesdays.
No, it's too many towns in my brain.
Any others business to report?
Nothing.
Item five, unfinished business. The board have anything to say? Luke?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, moving on. Item six, new business. Site plan review for Green Island Herb applicant, so Jordan and Erica Godino. Location one fifty nine U S Route one. Step up the podium, folks. Yeah, yeah, if you would please.
All right, I'm, I'm Jordan.
Okay, this is a, uh, site plan review, so basically all we need is if we have any questions for you or directed at Luke about your, your permit or anything, this is probably where we'll take care of them. Anybody on the board have any questions for either of them?
Um, some of the things required on the site plan aren't indicated here, um, like all the lot lines, that's like the number one thing. Is that critical or does that have to be done?
Um, it's an existing law and.
That, that was my question, since, since it's existing, there's no need to include those things?
I, I didn't see any need for it. Everything that they're doing, except for the very front yard work, is interior. The only work they're doing on the, um, exterior is the addition of those two handicap, uh, ADA parking spaces in the front and relocating the sign. And I think you're adjusting the wheelchair ramp, is that correct?
So actually, we updated a little since looking at it more and we had the electrician come, um, and I didn't bring that one, but we decided not to add the handicap and leave the ramp where it is now, so it wouldn't be a change. We're just gonna update the ramp, so it's.
We, yeah, we thought there was enough parking existing that one of those spaces that are existing could be dedicated as a handicap directly across.
Okay.
Um, so if we needed to update that, um, and not do the, any of the work.
No, that's, it's, it's.
Less work, so.
I'm not sure, I don't remember the, the ramp that's there now. It goes across the front of the porch.
Yes.
I was gonna say, it's, it's for ADA, it has to be one to twelve pitch, and the look, what I see there doesn't look like your image.
The one that's there is, the one that's there, it currently is, uh, but it's a little rough.
Yeah, we're updating.
So, so we're actually gonna decommission the existing because we're, um, updating the decking and the steps. Uh, so that ramp will be very similar in style, but we'll make sure, um, that it's either identical or if it's not to the pitch, it's gonna be mainly vinyl, that that's the, the build of that, so we would make sure that it was. So I don't know if we need to update anything as we, um, address the handicap.
Yeah, yeah, I know, uh, the height of the porch compared to the pavement is, what, about a foot and a half, maybe, two feet?
Um, I, I believe there's two steps, um, on that, there's two steps, um, from the pavement to the.
About two feet.
I remember doing the pavement, but definitely have them all work together, so it's, like, should be.
Okay, I mean, it's.
Yeah, the pavement is just a resurfacing, um, and, and instead of, uh, there's railroad ties as kind of the bumpers, there's gonna be an, an actual asphalt curb in that same area where the railroad ties are. Instead, because they're kinda deteriorated now.
Is the current one ADA compliant that you know?
Do your current ramp?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's the pitch of one to twelve, if tw- two feet, it'd be like a twenty-four foot long ramp.
Uh. I believe that it's currently the proper pitch.
Okay.
Um, I didn't take my level and, but I, I've walked it, it seems right. It, it could be off a tiny bit, but.
I, I, I'm not, I'm just curious. Okay.
And, and if, is that, is one twelve, that's what, so, I mean, we would certainly ensure that if it's not, that we would fix it.
One to twelve is, yeah, yeah.
It can't go any longer because it's already at the, where traffic passes, so it can't extend further, so then we would have to, um, come up with a new plan, whether it was run along the front of the building, uh, with the turn,
Yeah.
or if there could be a turn where it is, um, in some fashion, we'd have to come up with a new plan.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, when they're gonna make it, we can get the specs and run it by you.
Yep.
Um, and the only thing that's not on there is, uh, we had, like, the electrician come and how we wanted to do the security lighting outside, which I would also run by you.
Yep.
Um, but we know there's residential on the side, so, um, he suggested have the lights, uh, motion, but point towards the ground for walking to your car, but nothing that stays on is, is bright on each corner for the security cameras as well for, for security.
So I got a question. You, you also have a business on Verona Island. Okay, what, what, how is this one different from your business on Verona?
Oh, it's a completely different business. Uh, Green Island Herb is in medical.
Yes.
Uh, re- uh, retail, and this one would be recreational, a different name, um, different incorporation, different rules. Uh, for example, we grow for Green Island Herb, we do not grow recreational, so we wouldn't be doing that at all. It's just, uh, prepackaged products for, for those recreations.
And how does that work? Do trucks come in with it, or? I'm just curious how it all works.
Um, we find vendors like you with any, any local vendors and, um.
Yeah, so, so the, um, in the adult use, uh, is there, is, uh, everything is track and trace. Um, it's not currently track and trace in medical, so, um, anything that would be brought to the store would be through licensed vendors that are in a state portal, um, that the products would be registered as being in. They actually know in real time if they look, if there's something in transit, they could know that there's something, there's a trip ticket, uh, the trip ticket gets to the location, you have to have records that you received the trip ticket, when it, who delivered it, when it was delivered, then it has to be entered into the state portal on the receiving side, so that then this, then they're aware that this product went from location A to location B, it's currently ready for sales, and then as they're sold, we have a state tracking system that would be, um, a, a platform for the point-of-sale system that's attached and uploads at the end of the day of sales, so that the state's aware of, um, what actually left through retail sales to customers.
Even how you dispose of products goes through the system. We have that system now, it's just not, it's the medical one.
Okay, and nobody can light up on property?
No, uh, social, they can't. Social clubs in Maine weren't legalized, meaning you can't be on the property using, and, uh, we do watch the cameras and make sure that's not happening.
Okay, all right. Is there a question I should be asking that I have not asked?
I know, right? No, we, I mean, I've been working with the compliance departments for the past seven years and, and the inspector, and I feel like we have a good, and we get updates constantly, and there's been some new updates that are actually.
Yeah, yeah. And our, I mean, our biggest concern, we wanted to get ahead of the, and come to the planning board, make sure that there wasn't concerns or issues that we needed to know about and get surprised by, because we, we wanna begin renovations in good faith and know that, that we can roll out this, this business plan and make sure that, that there isn't anything that we haven't perceived. Um, so that's a concern. So our process, um, you know, we, we don't have a hard and fast deadline, we have hopes that this could be a spring, uh, completion for the renovation, um, so hopefully by sometime early next year, um, into, you know, but given things happen, uh, that might, that's somewhat dependent on vendors and, uh, not vendors, uh, contractors, uh, for work.
Contractors. Yeah, but we do like it done perfectly, so we're just.
So everything is sealed when it comes to you?
It is, yes.
And it's sold sealed as well?
It's prepackaged.
So there shouldn't be any odor coming from the facility at all?
Nope, there's no.
There wouldn't, yeah, the, the packaging requirements, um, are pretty significant, opaque packaging, tamper evidence seals, um, all the required labels on it, and so, um, there's no opening of product and letting people touch anything or, or handle anything.
We don't have any in others.
No, right, but it, that would be against, uh, so.
And I'm gonna ask a silly question probably, but, uh, you gotta be twenty-one to buy an older, or eighteen, or what's the age?
It's, it's twenty-one for, yes.
For recreational.
For recreational.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure in my mind.
Yeah, yeah, so currently.
They'll make a cut.
Main state law does allow for medical to receive medical cards at, at eighteen, and there could even be guardians that have medical cards for even younger, certain conditions they qualify for. We don't deal with that, um, anybody below eighteen, so.
We actually have stricter restrictions than the state does for our property over there. We don't allow.
No, we decided we weren't comfortable with that.
Um, we didn't want, but the state's actually more relaxed on there.
Hmm, okay, well, thank you. Um, it says you'll be doing landscaping buffers or some landscaping, um, and electrical service. I didn't know if you could just elucidate on those to renovate.
Oh, I just. Yeah, the electrical element, the security lights, we need to update, we might need to update this, the service on the side, just for how much, because we're using heat pumps.
Okay.
Uh, so this is something, uh, Mack Electric is generally who we use and that's who came out. Um, he said that, uh, we have one hundred amp service, he said if we're doing work, he had suggested that it might be good to go to two hundred amp, just so that we're, not that we're utilizing a lot, but we are gonna switch to heat pumps for our main, uh, reliance on our heating tool, uh, in that, so there might be an upgrade on the outside to two hundred amp service.
He said it's old too, very old.
It's old, yeah, he, yeah.
What's the, what's the current heat?
Uh, it's, uh, uh, oil with, uh, old radiator style, um, yeah, really old radiators in the building.
We don't like that.
Yeah.
Is that the real estate office?
Yeah, so like basic security requirements, just those kind of upgrades that we needed for the lighting outside.
It was.
So I can say it again.
Uh, just the required security lights, things like that, and when I said landscaping, really just maintenance of, uh, the lawn or flowers.
Okay, thank you.
Again, you folks, uh, you, you're not permitted to do any grow on, on site, is that correct?
Oh, we know, yeah.
Is there plans that you are hoping maybe to expand to that Sunday soon?
Absolutely not.
No, it's too tight, it's too tight.
Obviously, if I, you, you would be back before us, but that, that was my question, is you will not be growing and you have no intentions in the foreseeable future. Uh, how much traffic do you expect to be in and out, how much traffic are you hoping to be in and out of your business in the run of a day?
Well, so, uh, I mean, I think, I think that's difficult to predict, um, just because,
It is.
Uh, we, we can't really go to other stores in other towns and say, well, hey, how many customers are you getting?
Yeah.
We, we know that we have, even with all of our signage, we still have enough people knocking on the door and asking for retail sales that we have to turn away, even though it says medical only, you know, uh, uh, on all the signs on the door, stop, medical sales only.
Um, so, so, um, but the parking that's there with the, uh,
seven, uh, or six or seven spaces on the side, the, um, one or two that, because we only need one or two employees tops in the back parking, and we're also going to add a couple of parking spaces in the back, that we could never, we would never anticipate that the lot would be filled up to capacity. I mean, to have four or five people at a single moment, um, would be a lot of customers at a time. Um, typically, even in our busy store in Verona, um, it's, you know, we've had our events and we know that we've created some traffic when there's been event days. Um, but on, on a normal day, the traffic flow seem, is very doable, uh, they come in one or two at a time and then they're out pretty quickly, so it's a very short stop. People wouldn't be lingering, there wouldn't be loitering there, so it would be a pretty quick, um, turnaround for, for traffic.
That, that is a busy road, especially this time of year.
I know, if they dare to pull in, right?
But, you know, uh, I've, you know, I've, Grindel Insurance and the eye doctor next door are, are both places that I go to. And I'm amazed that when I go there, almost every time, within twenty seconds, there's an opening, I'm out on Route one, so it's, it's busy as the traffic is.
Okay.
It's usually easy to get out.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, and it's, and it, I, I know it gets very congested, I mean, with down at the bottom, you know, I mean, it's impossible to get out of Hannaford and, and Duncan, I just, it's, it's terrible. I think it does get safer and easier as you get up a little further, so it's not quite as bad.
The one difference I think is on people coming up on a Friday afternoon, their vacation week, aren't pulling in to buy more insurance.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, or get their eyes checked, um, you know, so that's, now, now you have potential of, you know, get all that Route one traffic, which is even exacerbated by the, um, construction out there in, in Orland. Uh, it just comes in like big bunches, so that, I mean.
It sounds like from their description, it'd be less than what pulls into McDonald's, and that's up that way. So it'd be less traffic in McDonald's.
But you can, so, so my, so my, can, if you have one car waiting to turn out, can another car pull in?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. The, I, the mouth is wide enough there that it's, it's definitely, it's not a, a single lane, it would definitely be, um, because we have that on the back lot on Verona where it's, it's definitely a single, but this, it's a pretty wide mouth that exists.
Yeah, so, I mean, at McDonald's, how many cars could they accumulate in their parking lot? Two dozen, three dozen?
At least, yeah.
Yeah, right, but, but they don't have that. So, so, I mean, them just saying there could be potential congestion, um, just because of its proximity, people go, oh, let's stop here on our way to whatever bar harbor or where they're going. Right? And that, I mean, and that could be on a Friday or a Saturday or, or any weekend day, just, you know, creating a bottleneck, that's, um.
I suppose if that became a problem, we could talk to you guys about more spaces or something, I mean, I guess that'd be good.
Is, is there room to, to do more? I mean, I don't think, it doesn't look like there's much room there in that.
Well, they would propose to couple on that front area.
Yeah, so, so with the, with the measurement there, there, there is, um, twenty plus feet that, uh, is currently long in the front. So that theoretically could be two additional spots and, and those spots, because it's a double lane, so if, if there's the, the existing parking spaces, if the two were added, there is enough room for both to back in, um, to the, to the lane of, of traffic. I don't know if that makes sense if you're looking at anything, but, um, you know, adding two additional ones, we are adding, uh, in the back, they currently have a gravel pad that's in the back, that's not paved, that you, you could see that the, um, the employees at Grindel used to park back there, they would kinda be lined up, so there is spaces that people have been utilizing as parking, it's just not currently paved. We're planning on parking, putting lanes on those, um, so that there would be designated spots in the back. Um, and currently, we have a lot more employees working on Verona because, um, yeah, this is, uh, this is the, where, you know, this was kind of, um, what we designated as employee parking kind of pulled up over here with the additional spots along here. There might not, when I pulled the tape before, uh, there's definitely three spots in this location, especially if there's, you know, so that these don't get in the way, but there definitely would be three in the back that could be added, um, that's, that's back there. So with the side parking, that's six or seven, um, existing, I can't remember when I counted, um, and the additional that we're gonna designate in the back. This area too, I thought was enough if we happened to have one of those RVs pull in, um, and there's not enough room. This area in the back does allow for an RV to kind of pull in, back up and exit, in, in my opinion. I mean, I'm not an expert, but just from lining up, thinking what would happen if something larger pulled in to that, would they be able to, to turn around and get out? And I think that there's enough room in that back area since they can pull up. The, uh, right-of-way driveway is over here, it's kind of right to the back, um, and they've got parking kind of over, so their house would be in that location. Um, so I don't think any of our traffic would go down into their, um, there, even if there was a larger vehicle backing up, I don't think that they would experience any.
And we have an extra lawn there, so, there's a lawn.
There is, yeah, there's, yeah, that's also, could theoretically be expanded because there's a large oak tree or some sort of tree with lawn that, um, probably could have more parking on it, um. But I don't, I don't think we'll be in that, because I, we're, we're very busy on Verona and we, with our spots that we have, we hardly ever have anybody go in the back. All the parking, um, in the back is almost all of our employees, so we'll have four or five employees working and that's most of what we use in the back, um, and the customers rarely have to go to the overflow parking, except.
Typical, typical transaction is only a few minutes, but it doesn't take that long. I, some people come in and need more information, they're, but they're not like the average.
Um, this is not required by any plan, but what's your, you, uh, the sign that they have there, you know, they always use that for community information. Is your plan to keep using the sign and, is it coming down or is it gonna stay?
Oh, we'll do a new sign. I know there's a sign permit. I didn't, um, contact the sign company yet to even start that, so I couldn't, didn't wanna submit anything. I def, I wouldn't be going beyond what existed, but I'll be submitting that when I know the specs and then I'll also ask, which I wanted to ask on what the lighting requirements was for signs, so I know in the design.
Will, will it be backlit, or are you going to?
No, just like right now, I'm repelling, you know, so we have two little lights on it, and I just wasn't sure if you're allowed to do from up top or below, or what the requirements were.
Have, have projector lights up onto it?
As long as they're, typically they like them up top, because then it's going down on the sign and it's not blinding people.
Oh, yeah. Mm-hmm.
If you have them going up, you just have to make sure they're angled at.
I like from up top, so.
There's actually one, there's actually one on, uh, Route forty-six there for that new storage place that I need to talk to, because they have lights that go up, and if you come around the corner, it's boom, right in your face.
No, I like that from the top based on the height of that sign, so it's great to hear, because you're like.
Question for you. On your change, you're gonna keep the current ramp.
We did decide to keep it.
Yeah, I understand, and Mark went through that whole thing, and I'm looking here at your plans where I Xed out where you had on your plans for the ramp.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and now I see the entrance is right there where the ramp comes up. Is that a problem at all?
It's actually easier for them, we figured, this is another reason for keeping it there, is that.
Is that full height right there? Is it? I've not, have not been on that ramp, so.
Oh, so their, their current ramp is here and then they feel like to come in here.
Okay, so the ramp is coming in from here.
Yeah, and the handicap.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, and there's still enough room, because it's a very wide set of stairs, um, if people, they don't have to use the ramp to go up that way, there's still room to the side of the ramp to use stairs, so it's a pretty wide porch. I don't know if it's, um, I'm gonna guess that it's ten feet, eight feet.
Yeah, it is.
So this plan is not drawn to the specs?
Oh, gosh, I tried, I'm sorry. It's not to, uh, scale.
It's this one, isn't it, twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Um, but I actually prefer it this way, because then it's easier for someone handicap to go right into the entrance instead of around.
Yep.
Sins ban sole. That's quite a long park. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Finally got it up, sorry.
Oh, yeah. Of this, yeah, right here. So, all right, yeah, I mean, it's covered by trees, but the entrance is here and it was like handicap parking and the ramp.
Mm-hmm.
And then the entry. And we're doing a s, entry door and an exit door separate, so we've noticed it's easier for traffic than bumping into each other on a singular door.
Yeah, that's probably the biggest change to the exterior of the building is, is to, to put those two, two doors in.
Yeah, and we wanted that too, that way it would lock right behind people when they left, because they automatically lock. Right now, we buzz people in, so it, um,
Yep.
it's a safety, security feature, they can't just come in.
Cool.
Anybody else have any questions? Luke, anything to add after their presentation?
No, I'm, I'm gonna go over the security and lighting and signage and stuff with them, um. You know, if they were growing or if there was a lab or things like that, then there'd be a lot more stuff for us to review, but this seems pretty open and shut to me.
Are there any property about here that are here tonight? There are. Would you care to speak?
Yes.
Okay, folks, if you could have a seat and take a rest for just a minute, and come on up and introduce yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Hi, I'm Terry Johnson. I live right across the street at one sixty-six U S Route one, where the retaining walls are that y'all put in for me a couple of years ago. They're beautiful. Um, my biggest concern was the, the potential for odor, which we've already talked about somewhat. I recall going on Verona and the smell was just overwhelming, and so I assume that's a different process? I know you said everything was gonna be sealed, but you must do something differently to medical marijuana, is that?
I think grow it.
Should I speak from the bleachers? I don't know if that's.
Go ahead, go ahead, please, please go.
Um, so, so we, we do grow, um, at our facilities on Verona, so that there, there is, uh, there are, there are plants, um, at various stages at various times, and so that, um, you know, we're not the only ones that grow on Verona, so I do wanna put that out there, but, but we are growing on Verona, um, so, so we do, uh, so what you're smelling, that, that process would not be happening at this facility at that location, um, that, that's for, we would only be working with other farmers that are located elsewhere in the state. Um, not in Bucksville.
Well, that's a good, okay. Thank you. Um, the other thing I was concerned about was the sort of clientele that goes through recreational versus medical marijuana. I feel like there's a chance of people, you mentioned that you didn't anticipate that they were gonna loiter in any way. Um, I know I have enough issues with loitering on my wall, people throwing their trash there, which is, I just didn't want to incur any more of that or any type of activity where, I don't know, we wanna say criminal, or people trying to steal things or break into your home or your own business.
Well, I can, I can help on that, so, um, since we started, uh, the inspector made it clear we're responsible for people on our property and we don't allow loitering, so when that happens, we move people along, so.
Yeah, and, um, can I offer my opinion, um, on that? I, we'd like to try and be very professional with what, what we're doing, and we encourage, um, our clientele, we feel, is a very broad spectrum of our community. We, we really do represent a very broad spectrum that, that utilizes what we offer. And we feel that it's gonna be a very similar customer base. There's a lot of reasons why people don't want a medical card. Um, and I, I really, um, you know, we've never had, um, we've never had to call the police to our location. We, we, you know, they've come for a bit different reason, an accident, um, trying to make sure that traffic was flowing safely on the event day. Um, so we've never had any issues with, with anything. Uh, any problem customers that we've deemed, we've tried to correct their, you know, that was either from someone that ignored our signs that said no consumption on site, and we, we banned people, we've said they're not allowed to come to our property if that's ever happened, which is only one incidence in all the years we've been doing it. Um, and so we are more than willing to, um, exclude something, and I think it's a, it's the exception and very, very rare that there's a problem customer. Um, and I would say that I've seen the police at Hannaford much more often, um, in the parking lot dealing with issues than I've ever seen in our parking lot. So just, just as, just to, uh, you know, try and give some assurance that I don't think that we're bringing a security element into town. Just, just, yes.
Okay, that's, that's good, because recently we dealt with the, uh, apprehension of seeing all the windows broken on Spring Fountain and all of that kind of vandalism that was going on to my other, a butter. So, um, that, thank you for talking to me about that, I appreciate it. The other thing.
And there's very strict requirements on security for them and, uh, both from the town and from the state as far as cameras that are twenty-four seven and record for a certain number of days and lighting and all sorts of things, so that's pretty well covered from that standpoint.
Okay. That's good, thank you. Uh, the other issue was, do you see that this being a potential to adversely affect my property value? I mean, how many people, no offense, how many people want to live across the street from, uh, recreational marijuana? Do any of you want to?
Wouldn't bother me. I don't think it's gonna hurt anything. I mean, based on their Verona store and how. I mean, based on their Verona store and how, how professional it looks and clean and.
Mm-hmm.
It really hasn't been a problem over there. The one complaint that I've ever had over there has been the odors and that won't be an issue here because there's no growing, so.
That, that property does. Right, right. Um, yeah, the odors were really concerning. I mean, the other thing I did wanna like s- expand upon, you guys were talking about the amount of traffic. And coming from Bar Harbor direction on Saturdays and Sundays from about ten thirty A M until about one thirty, the traffic gets stopped in front of my house, backed up from the traffic light. Sometimes all the way back past Spring Fountain and getting in and out of my driveway, especially if someone's coming out of Vansel or someone's coming out of, and people are just trying to gun it. It's, it can be a little bit of a bottleneck there, so I understand that you're mentioning that you may not have that many all at once, but it is kinda jammed up there in the summer. Um, that's, those are my concerns. Thank you for listening and.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
I, I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you for speaking to us.
And I would, I'd add one more thing to the, um, traffic, which of course is just my opinion on it, but I don't know that we're going to be drawing extra traffic. I mean, Bangor has enough shops to cover whoever's in Bangor. Um, I, I think that we're going to hopefully be capitalizing on that. There's already a lot of traffic there. Uh, they're already shopping and they're coming down Route one anyways, so I, I don't think we're necessarily going to add a lot of vehicles to the area. I think we're gonna be.
I think they might be surprised.
Well, um, yes, I mean, maybe perhaps that, that is, so I, but, um, but anyways, so there's something else to put out there. Nice to meet you.
Thank you, Derek. Is there anyone else in the audience that would care to speak? Seeing none, I guess I will close that portion. Uh, anything more to add, Luke, before we, uh, the board comes to a conclusion on, on, uh, land use permit?
I don't currently have any concerns and I think if something did come up, whether it be traffic related or parking related or something, I, I feel like I could work with them and. We've, we've come to a solution. Um, they've been great to work with before, so.
Can I ask one more question about odors? What is the, the ordinance right now for odors in Bucksport?
If, the way we wrote it for marijuana or cannabis, it's changing, um, uh, is that if you can, if I can smell it at the property line. Then they get a written warning and have, I think it's seven days to correct it, and if I can still smell it at the property line, I can shut them down.
This wasn't, um.
That's not the case in Verona, so.
And this, uh, is, is new business probably, but about a year ago, we were using our fire pit and whoever's really complained that it smelled bad. Uh, they didn't like the smoke, they didn't like the smell, and next thing I knew, the Bucksport Fire Department was at my house making me extinguish my fire pit. I just didn't.
There's, well, you're not in the village. There are rules about burning in the village, but only.
I was just showing.
Yeah, unless you were burning something inappropriate, you're the firefighter, but unless it's something inappropriate, you should be allowed to have a fire pit.
Right.
If you're under three feet high and three feet wide. And it's wood or things you're allowed to burn, you shouldn't have been told to put it out, but. No, that's okay.
Anybody on the board, you have any questions?
Uh, my only concern was the RV and I'd like Luke to make sure that there's ample room, not just maybe, but ample room to turn those rigs around. Some of them have cars that they're hauling behind.
Well, I would like to think, I'd like to think they wouldn't be dumb enough to do that.
Oh, no, please, please, come on, come on, come on. All I can see is one getting stuck halfway in, okay, and having a problem getting in to turn around. I think you can appreciate where I'm going with this.
Well, it happened once at my gun shop, so I, I know.
Well, then you got your gun out, okay, good. That solved it. Um, I'm just saying that I am a little concerned, not a lot, just but a little concerned to make sure that an RV that's towing cars as we see all the time here.
What happened in my place was they had to unhook, move the car.
Yeah, I can just see that with the, uh, car out in Route one and, and there's no place to turn around or, uh, pull up.
Well, no.
So, that's my only concern that I have for them and I think that's minimal compared to.
Yeah, I think they're okay on that. Like I said, they may have to unhook the car, park at the spot and then turn the mobile home around, but.
Where?
What do you mean where?
I'm just asking the question, if they're fully, if they have all the cars are in the parking slots that they have.
Yeah.
All I'm asking is to make sure that they can do, do that, um, and, and see that or put a sign up that says no RVs.
Yeah. Yeah. The odds of them seeing that sign before they've already.
I, hey, I understand. But that's my only concern I have for them. I don't have any other concerns at all.
Yeah. Like I said, it happened once at my shop and we moved some of our other cars around and we got their car unhooked and we got them out of there. I mean, it was, took a little coordination, but.
Well, I can just see somebody trying to back, back out afterwards, oh my god.
And, and the lawn is perfectly drivable if somebody wants to drive. They could back across the lawn to, to, if they're, if they got in and put itself.
You might wanna put a sign in there, no overnight parking, though.
Um, here's a weird question. Like, you would never let DoorDash do deliveries for you or something, right? This is like, you have to like, okay, no.
That's a good question.
It is a weird question. No, but I mean.
But it's good, it's a good question. Yeah, do they deliver alcohol?
I, I don't know, I've never used.
I've never used them either.
I don't think they can deliver.
I'm currently not versed on where the, the state delivery rules are. We do not deliver currently, uh, in our medical, we have no plans on delivering recreational. Um, and I don't know what the, what the rules and laws are on that, but it certainly wouldn't be DoorDash, um.
Or some other, some other service.
And, and I, and I'm not aware of any that exists or what the legalities are with that, but we certainly, it hasn't even been a discussion.
I do compliance, I'm pretty, um, overly particular, so I don't fancy us allowing deliveries.
It just seems, yeah, we wouldn't wanna have an employee that's going on like that, so it's us.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions?
Those, those yellow lines, are those supposed to be lot lines?
Yep, they are, but they're not super accurate. They're, they're overly.
I was gonna say, they could do packing over in McDonald's.
No, I mean, it's, it's obviously shifted a little bit. What happens is you take a round picture and you put a flat grid on top and it gets a little skewed. That's why we always tell people that's not a survey, it's, it's a, it's a reference, so.
I just thought they owned half of the McDonald's parking.
That's Vansel, right? That's Vansel, it's next door, I don't think it's McDonald's.
Okay, have we reached the point where, uh, we can make a vote on this? I'll entertain, uh, entertain a motion from anyone on the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, the, uh, plan review, site plan review.
Okay. Motion to review the site plan view, anybody with a second?
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, that we will approve the land use permit. Any more discussion on the board before we vote? All those in favor of issuing this permit?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? I guess you've been granted your land use permit.
Yes.
Okay, item B, subdivision preliminary review, Duke Family Farms applicant Elizabeth and Harold Duke, location eight Foss Farm Road.
Hey, thanks for having us.
Hello.
So, um, I'm Elizabeth, this is Harold. We bought our home in two thousand and three. Had our child in two thousand and four and that park bench upstairs was painted by our child. Um, we love Bucksport, we really appreciate what the town has done for us in the last twenty years and I am a nurse practitioner by trade. My grandfather became a very wealthy man working for Procter and Gamble with profit sharing and I have no expectation that Northern Light will do that for me. So, when we bought this land back in two thousand and three, our thoughts were that someday, hopefully, we would be able to potentially subdivide. The property and make a nice neighborhood for other future residents of Bucksport. Um, in the satellite view photo that was up there before, I just wanna mention that last winter, we had, um, a, uh. Woodsman come and they harvested the majority, a lot of the trees, so that now there's a water view from even the farmhouse up by the road. Um, and, um, that actually did pretty much pay for our survey.
Mm-hmm.
The, the trees, so, um, you know, I remember being upside down in our mortgage. At one point when the mill closed and we are no longer out upside down in our mortgage. So, I'm fairly confident we could attain between that and my du- my existing retirement fund, which I could borrow against as well. Um, I'm sure we could get the funding to put in a paved road. Um, I'm not that concerned about that, but. Um, we definitely have questions for the town because, you know, as we move forward, we wanna make sure we're doing things right. So, um, Luke, you've been extremely helpful, um, telling us what the rules are. And, um, you know, I don't know if you're able to pull up the plan for the team to look at, but, you know, um, we have hired somebody to start doing the soil tests. Um, we have hunted this land the last twenty years, um, and I can pretty much show you where the wetlands are. I mean, they're right here, um, right along here.
Mm-hmm.
And then if this is Godette's property, we call this down here at the end of the pasture, the little rocky river. But when the man came to remove the trees last winter, that's exactly where his skidder went, which we would need probably a culvert right over here to preserve the wetlands. Um, ultimately, what we would love to be able to do is become snowbirds someday and my child would like to make a life in Bucksport, so.
This is where that little trickle of water is.
Right, right, so it, it, it's over here and it sort of does go down these low lands a little bit here. So, um, regardless, ultimately, we know that we're not gonna want a nearly four thousand square foot home. When we're old, so what we hope to do is put a ranch home that will eventually be our child's permanent home. Sell this home and, you know, my idea was, you know, maybe, you know, with this beautiful waterfront property. Potentially sell one of these lots to somebody who might be willing to help us install the road. So, that's kind of where we're at. Um, we do have some connections, um, we have some calls out to people that put in roads. Um, but, you know, even questions about whether should it be a private road or a public road if we're gonna be having school buses come down and turn around. Actually, Luke, he did revise this to make this into like a circle, because school bus could simply go around a little circle there.
Oh, I see. Yes.
Nice.
So, um, we're moving ahead with our plans, you know, like I say, I'm not worried about the financing.
I can't see it.
I do not have time to go to a bank and get a letter for you guys, but I'll certainly share with you my resume if you wanna see it. I work for Blue Hill Hospital, I'm the clinician at Maine Maritime Academy sick bay, taking care of all the kids coming in. With their sore feet next week during mug week, so, um, anyway, so, um, Harold is more of a mechanical guy. I would say he's a jack of all trades, a master of none maybe, but, you know, he certainly has done a lot of different work over the years. So, um, I guess, um, we have noted that, um, there has been, you know, water runoff from Route fifteen. That has been unpleasant for us in the winter for myself and Steve Godette that are living there now.
Good, sorry to read.
And then the other thing I will mention is when you read through the D, you will see there was, um. Something happened between Mr. Godette and Mr. Eason. Mr. Eason sued Mr. Godette for building onto his property. Well, Mr. Godette did it again, but we don't plan to sue Mr. Godette, cause we're not those type of people. Because ultimately, what we would prefer to see is there be a better road put in anyway. Um, and I guess one of my biggest questions is if this could be a public road, would it have to be wider? Because absolutely, that concrete barn and all that, yeah, we would move that.
Um, how wide is it showing now?
Said something about fifty feet.
Yeah.
I think that's what it needs to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is it showing on here? I don't see, I don't see a dimension. Doesn't mean I'm not missing anything.
Uh, the survey had told me fifty feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's what he's planning on, I think.
Right, right, so, um.
Does he have more dimensions on the?
I don't know, I mean, if there was, you know, potentially eight more homes down there, wouldn't it be nice if the town maintained the road and plowed the roads?
Well.
For the school bus to get down.
It would be nice.
Yeah, I think this, I think, uh, you have to, you have to think in terms of making it for the town to do that, but I'm.
I mean, you know. Right, right, exactly. But it's a beautiful place to live, I mean, we can see the, we see the eagles every day.
Yeah, that's nice. Uh, if you don't mind, I'm gonna ask a couple of questions.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Do you have the railroad tracks in front of you? Have them been pulled up in that location by any chance?
No, no, they have not been pulled up. I have not heard any trains.
Well, you're not gonna hear any trains because the tracks have been pulled up in certain sections.
Mm-hmm, right.
Uh, and, cause I was out there not too long ago and I know that the tracks have been pulled up in certain sections, so it hasn't been pulled up in your section.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, again, these typically, if it's not gonna be used, at some point become snowmobile trails or something like that, that will happen. Has there been any talk about that?
We just heard a rumor about it.
I only. I heard a rumor through Luke, actually, that he said someday it may be coming to a trend.
Oh. Well, there you go, so.
You know, and I hope it does, because I think it would be beautiful.
Well, it'll improve the, the, you know, the value of these houses that people built down here along the.
I mean.
Well, it may or may not, depending on how that is.
I suppose it depends on the people.
Well.
On the housing, yeah.
Yeah, and whether it's a public access to cross it. Uh, I mean, there's certain aspects to that, that right now the railroad controls.
Well, that, there has to be a right away through there anyway, cause I don't own the property on the waterfront.
Right, Mr. Vayette owns this property along the waterfront.
On the opposite side of the track.
Yep.
Uh, perhaps he may be interested in the lot down there in the corner, because then he would have. Property right there, that, that buildable line on the plan that I was shown by our, the bigger plan.
Yep.
He probably doesn't have any buildable space on his little plot there.
I, I think it's all resource protection, I don't think it can build.
Right, but if he owned that cornered lot right there.
Up here, yeah.
You know, he, he could then, you know, be, potentially he would put a dock, I think.
Yeah, dock would be allowed. If it's not too steep and he can get down there, I don't know the term, but.
Yeah, it's pretty steep, unless you, till you get over here. Over here, it flattens out some.
It's pretty steep. It would have, right.
Yeah.
Right. So, anyway, I mean, what our real goal is, is we would like to be able to have a plan so that we can start being able to sell.
Mm-hmm.
Some of the properties and yes, if we have to put in the road first, we'll go along with it and we'll find a way, you know, um, to get it financed, you know, but.
Luke, what's the air, what's the size, uh, limit on the, on the lot there?
The minimum lot size is, uh, just under an acre, it's forty thousand square feet in that zone, so, um. I don't know why it's at forty thousand instead of an acre, but, so it's just.
Three thousand.
Three thousand short, so.
I think we could've fit more homes in, but we didn't want to. I mean, we love the land, we want it to be.
Well, you run into a problem if, I think, if you go over nine. Is it over nine?
No, fourteen.
Fourteen, no, over fourteen, I know you run into a problem.
Right.
So.
So, they've got, you're showing nine, right, I think. Um, what's the become of that Foss Farm Road?
So, the, the Foss Farm Road as it exists now is basically our driveway.
Mm-hmm.
Now, through the center there, there says Hinks Landing Road. That was the original Hinks Landing, uh, we have a photo somewhere in the. Uh we have a photo somewhere in the house, but Hinks Landing used to be the North Bucksport Dock, right? So the carriage road, which was never paved, is this line that transverses in the middle. If you don't mind showing it here, it's there, but it also comes through here. And the problem with right here is the land slopes quite steeply down. And it seems to me, I'm a healthcare professional, but it seemed to me that it would be less work to do what.
Yeah.
The skidder did to show us the easy way around.
It ran, it ran from here down along, almost where he's got this proposed, down along here, there's a fence line.
But no, it's here. It's, this is the old Hinks Landing Road. It's right along here. It's it's clearly marked, formerly known as Hinks Landing Road.
Cut. You're going to.
And it it goes down here and it's like a path that we've been using for hunting. Um and um this is lower land here, so you know.
So my question is, are you going to leave that as a path?
Yeah, we know that there's supposed to be open spaces.
There's a right of way there.
And there would be a right of way, there has to be a right of way anyway for Mr. Vayette.
So, so but the right of way couldn't be on your. The new road, the proposed road and then done the ending of that landing road? I mean, it could be.
If you moved it, I suppose.
That would be ultimately, this would be his right of way if we put this road in.
Right, right. He could take this road down and take his right of way.
Correct.
So this would this, this would disappear here, but it still comes out the same Foss Farm Drive.
Yeah. Right, but it's, so it's just, it's just, you're just going to let it be a path or? They have to keep some open space for recreational purposes, so I thought, why not let them have a. Well, I just know, I I I know, I'm just curious here. Yeah, that was my thought, was that that could be a recreational space.
But again, knowing the land like we do.
Hiking, walking, good.
Yeah.
I think my, you know, some of the flatter land is on that road, so I'm very negotiable regarding open space. I mean, I don't know what's gonna happen to Mr. Godette's property. He's not a healthy man, but that's not why I'm here today.
Yeah.
So um you know, really, he's um someday, it could physically be the town's property, is my suspicion though. Because he's in the hospital every other day and he owes, I don't like Eastern medicine.
Let's get back to that.
Anyways.
So anyway, you know, um that's the reality. So um so yes, you know, that's, you know, that lot nine there. Um probably has a little bit more wetlands than is expected, if you just look at the ele- elevation of the land.
But if we, if we use that current right of way as a open space, then that open space, that point five nine acres.
Mm-hmm.
Could be added into lot nine.
Yeah, it could be, it could be, absolutely, and yeah.
Which um so the other thing that I noticed is like where your driveway empties out onto River Road is pretty close to Hinks Road?
It is Hinks Road.
It is it.
Oh, okay.
It's the old Hinks Road. It's been renamed to Foss Farm Drive.
Okay, alright.
And it says road, but it's actually drive on the deed.
Mm-hmm, okay.
The sign says road at the corner.
Cause it says River Road there.
But the deed says drive. I don't know who's right.
This is River Road, Route fifteen.
Right, so so all of these homes are gonna be pulling out onto Route fifteen, right?
They will.
Yeah.
Right.
Where the road is now, yeah.
Correct, I know, it's um I just um, you've got Hinks Road coming in, so it's kind of.
Are you talking about Millville?
Millville, that's what I meant to say, sorry.
Millville Road.
That's what we were saying.
That's up on top of the hill for sure.
Yeah, that's, yeah, at the top of the hill.
So so so.
I still go.
We're in the gully just before Millville Road.
Here, I'll pull the map back up.
Okay.
So if you're driving up, yeah, where um you go past um the Howers, uh G N Siphol Street. Will be on your left and you hit the base of the hill. And then as you come up the hill, that's the Millville Road there on the right, so.
Okay.
This is Foss Farm down here.
You know, it's true that.
I mean, pulling out, is that, I mean, you you do that regularly?
We do it every day.
Yeah, so you do.
We're at the base of the hill. It's not fun when it's icy.
I know, so.
Um but um you know, the traffic uh being fifty-five miles per hour right there, you know, I don't know. I mean, maybe it would have to be slowed down a little bit. Um I don't think it would hurt my feelings.
There ain't many safe places on that road to pull out.
That's all regulated by uh Maine State P O D.
I don't even like pulling out of town.
With the amount of driveways there, I don't think they would alter it. Based on how many driveways every so many feet, as to what the speed limit is.
Right.
I I my mother. I don't even like pulling out of town from Farm Hook.
So so I I mean, I, there are a couple of houses up there that when I moved my mother-in-law into the, into town. Like she was like, no, I'm not, I'm not, I wouldn't live here just because of like trying to pull out of here. It it I mean, but she's. So that could be a concern. I don't know if it's, you know, untrafficked, plus pulling school bus in and out potentially.
They've done that for years, for school buses down there.
Yeah, Mr. Godette had a special needs child um living in the home there for a while. And that bus was pulling in and picking up the child in front of his house, turning around and coming back out. Actually got caught on the ice a few times, so um.
If there wasn't a road there then.
But it's a dirt road right now, and I think that would be actually improved upon by putting a deed. Um because, yeah, it it is prone to being run off with, cause we're at the base of a hill.
So are you considering like just sell the lots, let people put their own property up in?
Yes.
Do you have any guidelines for the kind of like properties that you want to see put in or no?
Uh my thoughts are, if you buy the property, you should build your house.
I mean, we do think that people should have the right to choose what they want to put on there, but you know.
You know, I I, you know. I mean, you're gonna have more control here about what goes on there than I am, say, per se, you know.
I just, most subdivisions have some sort of covenants, whether it be.
Yeah.
You know. Certain square, certain square footages or no mobile homes or.
We're putting it on being a mobile park. Right.
You know, so that's stuff and then, like we, like I talked to you about on the phone, if you're. If it's not gonna be a public road taken over by the town, then you need to have a road association or some type of covenant about how that's gonna work and be maintained. Otherwise, you get stuck being responsible for it.
Right.
We would love to have that be a town road.
I mean, absolutely.
And if it's built to town spec, then that's probably something the council would do, but it has to be built to town spec.
Yeah.
Right. Right.
There's Royal Ridge and then the one that the Osbornes just did there at Bucksport Village. Those are being taken over by by the town, but they have to be built to town spec first.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay, is there anything else?
Didn't we used to have, I I I thought, it's stuck in my head, but I thought lot used to be, have to be two acres. Two, two hundred feet of frontage on the road, minimum lot size.
No, it depends on the zone, um and this zone is Route fifteen. Um we're, we're Route fifteen residential, commercial corridor or something like that. Anyways, the minimum lot size there is forty thousand square feet. In R one, which is where you live, it's it's one acre. And then in really rural areas, it's R S, four acres in R two, so.
Let's say somebody wanted to buy a waterfront lot, like the one that's closest to the water, whatever, I forget the number, but. And then they wanna put up, you know, a four-story multi-unit. Well, I mean, it's gonna block all the other views, right? You know, you know, so.
Yeah, but the land does slope heavily downhill, so believe it or not, I don't think it would even obstruct the vehicles.
I don't, I don't think you could do that.
We have height limits.
Okay.
So they would, they wanna do four-story, but yeah.
No, but you you see what I'm saying? So if if you're not, no, that's that's why I was asking, what kind of, you want single-family homes?
Yeah.
Do you want people to put, can they put duplexes?
We were hoping for single-family, I mean, you know.
Well, you can write that up.
Yeah, right, I guess so.
Right.
Be in the covenant, which would be, the covenants can be a separate document that's recorded or it can be on the plan, but you've got a lot of stuff on the plan already, so.
Okay.
Either way, it it should be part of your application.
Mm-hmm.
And it could be as little as you want, or or it could be a long list. It's however you want it.
Mandate they all be colored certain, you know, or no pink houses, no black.
My descendants are from Newfoundland.
We're, 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 we're pretty easygoing folks and hopefully anybody that moves in there is gonna be also. Um if you own a pink house down there and you own, you you give me the money for that property, you should, I think you should have a pink house.
Yeah, but.
It's not my business.
Location for me as a professional has been beautiful, because I've been able to work in Bangor, ten minutes from Bangor. One mile away from the Orientin line. I've worked in Blue Hill, I've worked in Belfast. You know, it's just, you know, Alsworth is easy. You couldn't ask for a better location for a small subdivision. Um and you know, I know what I pay for taxes, you know, and I can imagine that it would be what we're paying times eight more. You know, so it definitely would benefit the town. Um but um you know, that's the main thing is before we start. You know, moving ahead and being able to, you know, rewrite deed, you know, write a deed and be able to sell a lot. I just need to be, have clear expectations from the town so that we don't waste money on time.
Some comments as far as the plan is concerned and missing information, you have to have test pits, for instance, reach a lot.
That's kind of.
Well location, um electrical power is gonna have to be in there somewhere. Uh just those things right off the top of my head I noticed, wasn't it?
That's why this is a preliminary, because I I told them that they don't have all the things they need, wetland delineations, stormwater.
Mm-hmm.
Um that determination on the road, the covenants, the things you just mentioned. Um there's a list of things and they're working on it, um but they wanted to come tonight as a preliminary. You guys could see it, familiarize yourself with it, ask any questions and tell them things that you like or don't like, so that they can work on those things. Um and also, the abutters were notified so that they could come if they wanted to, cause none here tonight unless Steve moved.
Yeah.
Um so.
He could, if this goes through.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could. It's a nice place to live, Steve, you know, and I tried to buy an electric car.
So. That's why they're here.
The payment was due I.
Yeah, well, good. Well, uh thank you for the information you've given us.
So.
And I hope that someday you'll be before us wanting your land returned.
Yeah, like I say, you know, I have sheep and an elderly horse and we hope that another family will come along and. Kinda do the same thing with the good old farmhouse, you know.
Any questions before I dismiss it?
Yes, um you you Luke summarized that a lot of things are being done behind the scenes. Um and I think you pointed to uh some wet areas on lot one and maybe on lot two? Is that, did I see?
Uh downing through here, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's, there's a, a low area.
Yeah, it's just.
So those are gonna be delineated. I think the survey said he's working on that, so.
They will be delineating.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So it that, I mean, my understanding is there's a general permit for wetland fills in Maine, allows up to forty-three hundred square feet.
Sure.
Is that right?
I don't know. I'll have to look.
Well, I mean, we really don't intend to fill any wetlands. We just wanna make sure.
Well, we gotta have a road, we gotta have a what.
Channel the water.
So my question is, if you find, if you do a wetland delineation and on lot one, it looks like it would be more than that, maybe eight thousand square feet or something like that. Um might that affect your uh geometry for lot one? I mean, cause you wouldn't wanna sell a lot that couldn't be built on.
It's, there's an existing house there though, right now. Lot one is the old original farmhouse that was built in eighteen sixty-five that we're living in now.
Okay, so that would, that would, the person would utilize.
That's their lot.
That's where we live now.
Okay.
So basically, you know, we're restoring it. It's slow going because we've got one guy doing it on a budget, but it's getting there.
Okay. But how about, how about lot two? Is there a farmhouse there or anything?
No, there's no property. The only homes are the um Godette's home and our home. And there once was, see where it's this concrete barn to be moved?
Yeah.
This property originally, when we involved it, had a two-story huge barn behind there that fell in. That we have removed and all that's left is like a little freestanding shelter for my elderly horse and four sheep. And you know, definitely that could be moved just to the corner of the old farmhouse. And we would imagine that the parking for the house would be behind the house um in a driveway. So you know, definitely that concrete slab would be picked up and moved with the installation.
Yeah, we have to, because the road's gotta go through the, yeah.
We have to, right.
So you know, just finishing the train of thought, if the wetlands carry on from lot one to lot two.
Mm-hmm.
Something, food for thought, if you find, you know, there's a lot of wetlands there, might not end up being a buildable lot. I mean, you could fill up to forty-three hundred square feet. You could fill for more, but you have to get a different type of permit, um which gets more complicated.
So we've got a guy doing the soil tests and digging test pits.
Yeah.
Uh we've already approved him to go ahead and start doing that to check, make sure that these are gonna be buildable logs and.
Yeah, and I think like, hey, we've, we've been living at this property all this time. It's kind of interesting, but this end is low, but then it's like it's high up here.
Right.
So then, you know, over here, it's high again.
I can see for the topography.
So, you know, it's, I think it might be available. I, you know, when you actually.
Okay. Looks like the wetland delineation will, will ferret that out. And the person doing the soil test pits, is that for just septic? They're not doing test pits for.
It was test pits and um.
He had some other things he was talking about too.
It's in the um little thing here that our surveyor.
Who's doing it again?
Let me see, the name.
The surveyor?
The, our surveyor is Pigley A. Day, it's Sean Mitchell, and it's Moist Environmental Services who's gonna be doing it.
David Moyes, yeah, he's the best, okay.
Okay?
See ya.
All right, good.
Can you put that back up, Luke? I just had a quick question for.
Oh, I didn't realize it went down. I'm sorry. I must've hit the wrong button.
I just had a quick question. Your road that's going in, obviously that road is gonna be going like this, if I'm looking at the greatest.
Actually, like I said, the skidder kind of showed us the easiest path.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, the deer didn't?
Right, you know, once the trees were removed and you could really see.
Yeah.
And the skidder, you know, when they're out there in February with snow and ice, they're not coming up steep hills.
Right.
So this is basically.
Really steep up here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this, this is kind of the path of the skidder.
But it flattens out there to longer.
Right, but as you come around to the other side, it starts to climb up again.
So it gently slopes down, but.
Done, it climbs back up up here.
And, and what kinda, you know, is that gonna be like a, a sled?
Yep.
I mean, people just get on the sled and just come down in the wintertime? I mean, I'm trying to understand the road a little bit better.
So. Um.
It's high way up at the top, but it's not uh.
Ninety, eighty, seventy, yeah, I mean it.
So when you, when you look at lot number six. Um the school bus turn around is gonna be on lower land.
Yeah.
Um and yes, this land does slope up fairly dramatically, so this is gonna be a driveway problem. For whoever buys that pro- lot, but once you get to the top there, it's the best views of the land.
Yeah.
Because you're way up high and you're looking out over the river and it's just so beautiful.
Yeah, you you're not putting in a cul-de-sac, you're gonna put a, a loop in.
Yeah, yeah, so like I said, the revise is more of like a little turnaround, so.
Which is gonna cut down on your lot size. Yeah, no, no, I understand. And I'm just looking at this.
Is it, is it going to be a loop or a cul-de-sac there?
No, I don't think it's cul-de-sac they're putting in. I think it's a loop, isn't it?
They, they, they passed around a client that had a cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Is it a cul-de-sac? Oh, yeah, it's a cul-de-sac, yeah.
On the revise.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so that's a cul-de-sac in there, which would be leveled out?
Yeah, that's, that's, this is where it starts to climb back uphill up in here. Somebody wants a, a nice view, they build a house right here.
Yeah.
And they're gonna have to walk their driveway a little bit.
Yeah.
So they might not be able to go to work when it's icy.
They might, they might not wanna go.
That's all I'm trying.
And it's happened to me.
They go to work when it's icy, they just can't come home.
Okay.
That's the beauty of Maine Maritime Academy. It's that bad, there's no schools, so I don't have to get out till.
Yeah.
Noonish to get to the hospital in Blue Hill to see my patients or other stuff in the afternoon, so. Um but yeah, no, it's actually one of the best spots for a house, cause it's nice and level up at the top of that hill.
But this is, this is quite a.
Really look out over the river.
Quite a ways here, go from one thirty to one ninety at the cul-de-sac. That's not that, that's quite a distance.
So it is heading uphill although.
It's heading uphill, but it's, it's uh not as steep as going up to the top.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You might wanna consider putting in there, you know, ha, not the color of the homes, I'm sure. Uh but the type of home that might go in slightly. Uh and then, then I'm thinking about how that home is gonna be situated in there. And the maintenance of trying to keep the property values up.
Mm-hmm.
Um as you're looking at this, so I mean, there's some opportunity there. I'm just thinking, if you're gonna write something up, write something up that's gonna make it stronger for you two. That's all.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, no, definitely. We appreciate that, because. Yeah, yeah, no, definitely, we appreciate that because, yeah, I don't.
I mean, you wanna get the best buck you can out of it.
That's our plan.
Yeah. Yeah, and the only way that's gonna happen is to really write it up so that, and with Luke's guidance, I'm sure you will get it nice so that it's understood that people that are gonna buy these lots, you wanna pay good money.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
Will, will you stand up on that lot, maybe look out across the river and see the mountains and you see the boats go by, you're gonna pay good money for it.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I, this is, you're probably not, this is like a weird question to ask, but, um, are you, for electrical, you're just gonna go with poles?
Yeah.
I mean, I know, I know it's cheaper, but if like the view is a, you know, a thing and you're running electric wires, whatever wire is out there.
I mean, I, I think some of that, some of that.
I mean, it's, I mean, you know what I mean, it's, if that's, if I'm looking at my view and I gotta see all that stuff, I don't know, I, it's there's other places to, you know, some people on lot four and five probably be fine, but.
Exactly.
Do you know what I mean, it's, if that's what you're going for is to sell the view, that's, I mean, I know it's more to run electric under it.
I mean, our buddy up the street has told us we should be calling the electrical people about the towers that are at the top of that hill. You know, with their light pollution, because it is true, like in our house, now that the trees are gone, if you were at the back of the house, the light from those towers.
Oh, that, that's only when they.
Is outrageous.
Yeah, but that's when they were switching the, that light stayed white over on the other side of the river, it's got nothing to do with this.
Yeah, but still, no, I understand what you're saying, there already is some light pollution though from, from those towers or the electrical system at the top of the hill.
He's talking about not wanting to see light poles.
Yeah, the poles and the wires, I mean, if, if, if you're really trying to sell like high-end, like I got a beautiful view, right, that's, and just people are gonna go, hmm, maybe. But if I'm looking at like wires and two poles obscuring my view, then, you know, I, I don't know, it's, I mean, it's your project.
I mean, how much does it cost more to?
Well, that's why.
Oh, quit that.
Yeah, I think that's the, that's the thing for us, you know.
Although, well, you don't have to worry about like the trees taking it out later, I mean, it's, you know.
One thing is, I mean, they could always run it on poles and get down to like the bottom of seven and then if those people wanna run it underground from there or whatever, wouldn't be that big a deal.
No, wouldn't.
Well, I didn't know if you, like you could service, service them through like that old road.
Yeah, I thought of that too, and then you could cut across eight to get over to six or.
Right, or something, you know, where, where, where you have a, you know, a, a, a little bit of both, I mean, it's.
Yeah, those are good points.
You know, so.
Rather than along the road after the poles maybe.
Wow, this, this is not official, I, I'm always a fan of sidewalks, it's just, they, they build a community, you know, that's, they encourage people to walk, to get out, kids can ride their trucks on them. Just saying, I mean, this is not an official, this is a concept thing, uh, and I know it's a little bit of extra expense, but I, that, that adds premium to, to a, um, that's, I live in the village and that's like one of my favorite things, is to be able to go out and walk and I, we see people, it just, it makes for safer neighborhoods, I think, anyway.
Yeah.
I buy two cents on sidewalks, but.
Oh, that's true, I mean, just our location over the years, we, it depends on who the postmaster is, where mailbox.
Where the mailbox is.
You don't even wanna know.
You might, you might have one of those by the end of the road on, on Route fifteen, like.
They don't wanna turn around and they wanted the mailbox over by the guard rail. And, and you know, and then finally one of the post people were like, I'm gonna get killed sitting here delivering mail.
But they could.
So we moved it to the other side and then a different person is delivering the mail and they don't wanna turn around. So by making this into a neighborhood, they'll have to come down to deliver the mail.
They might, I, I, you never know, I, I, I don't know, just, just stuff to think about.
Yeah.
Well, with the electricity, I was thinking, will we find the contractor to put the road in? We'll ask him about that also, I mean, could that be the time to do it?
Right, that's, that, that, that's just stuff to think about, so.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Okay, folks, I'm gonna cut it short, we got more business and a doctor or something. Thank you very much for coming in and giving us your presentation.
Yeah.
And you've got plenty to think about for, will you come back for?
Yeah, hopefully it's soon, but you know.
Okay, good.
It's just like healthcare, you know, you want your MRI tomorrow, it'll probably be next year.
Okay, good, thank you, folks, thanks.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Yep, yep.
Item seven, administrative business, document regarding Panquist development at Knoxview Apartments.
This is the document Richard talked about, that's for.
Hello, Mr. Chair, how are you?
Hi, Rich, I'm well, how are you?
I am well, so the document you have in front of you is part of a community development block grant that Panquist, uh, and the town had successfully applied for. This is taking place at the Knoxview Apartments and one of the conditions before they can get money released is to have the plan come to the planning board. The project is bringing offline apartments back online and addressing deferred maintenance issues. And before you ask, what is that, that is, uh, installation of heat pumps, weatherization, repair work to existing units that are currently not fit for occupancy and other items of deferred maintenance.
How many units up there are not fit for habitation yet?
I don't have an exact number and it was not in the paperwork.
I wasn't aware that there were, is it, are you, Luke?
I wasn't aware of that.
How long ago did this purchase take place?
Uh, this would've been at the time you folks approved their first phase of their project with the eighteen unit, yeah, prior to that.
First phase, okay. So all they need from us is for us to sign off that we're aware that they bought it, is that correct?
Exactly, to make sure that it, uh, lines up with what the comprehensive plan, um.
Okay, if I could see that, Richard?
What the comprehensive plan says and if you look back at section three of the two thousand seventeen, uh, comprehensive plans, um, needs to address several key housing issues, which includes condit-, uh, changes in conditions and needs as well as projecting future housing for, uh, demand as well. So that whole chapter is page twenty-one through page twenty-eight, um, and it's noted a couple of times in there about having, um, nice places to live, um, making sure that there's, uh, no lead paint in homes as well as other life safety and structural deficiencies. Um, so the town recognized this in twenty seventeen that there were different types of houses, um, back when this report was done, there were very many new housings being built in Bucksport. I believe you folks have already moved three different subdivisions just in your time, so we've seen a change since, uh, the closure of the mill and since COVID where we've, uh, had these changes, so, um, I do have a copy of the comprehensive plan, it doesn't come flat out and say install heat pumps, but this is something for each one of those units to make it more comfortable for the office.
A, a paragraph on this letter says, uh, "The project is consistent with the community's goals within the comprehensive plan and will meet all local required permitting requirements and regulations," you all set with that?
Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you, this will also be going to Hancock County, Hancock County Planning Commission as well, they'll receive all these documents, this is page one of a whole lot.
Item eight, limited public forum, an opportunity for the public to address the board on matters related to land use or planning in the town of Bucksport.
Hello, I'd like to speak on that as well.
And you are?
Hi, I'm Richard Tallow, the Economic Development Director for the Town Bucksport.
Thank you.
And I would like to invite this committee to join us next Tuesday at six o'clock right here for a public workshop, the Downtown Bucksport Coastal Resiliency Master Plan. Put the advertisement in this past week's Bucksport Enterprise, it's been on Facebook, it's been on the town website.
What time?
It is at six PM, it's right here, uh, there's a survey that can be found online, uh, people don't, if the public doesn't use internet or online, they can also grab a hard copy here at the town office. Uh, at last check, uh, two and a half weeks ago, we had thirty-eight surveys, I was a little concerned about that number, but the engineers have ensured me that's quite a high number compared to what they've been used to from communities, so, um, it's expected to go one and a half hours. And we'll do an introduction, we'll do a project overview of our goals and objectives and a summary of the existing conditions assessment work that's been performed to date. We'll go into public input breakout sessions, what do you value about the current waterfront? What are your concerns and interest in making coastal resiliency improvements, i.e. armoring the shorefront and or elevating structures such as the walkway? And what improvements to existing facilities or new facilities would you like to see at the waterfront? That's about to take forty-five minutes, then there will be a breakout session reporting back on what each of the groups spoke about in a little summary, that's ten minutes there. And then the final ten minutes, the engineer, G E I, will summarize the findings of the workshop and go over next steps in the master plan development, um, as this is part of a ship grant, shore and harbor improvement grant, which, uh, closes December thirty-first of this year.
So this is just for the waterfront?
It's called the Downtown Bucksport Coastal Resiliency Master Plan and the map does come up towards Main Street, we've looked at the effects of what stormwater runoff has had on the waterfront walkway as well, as, as we're all aware, Main Street's pretty much flat, but everything leading towards Main Street has a slope to it. Um, I've met with representatives of Department of Marine Resources, where this grant comes from, they've actually walked, um, with me from the walkway from Veterans House Pizza and Main Street the whole way, we saw conditions with, uh, the folks who gave us the money. Uh, Little River Surveying Company, um, has come out and taken mean low tide, um, high tide readings and surveys of the waterfront area as well. So it does encompass, uh, Main Street, but a, a lot of it is its impacts from up there to the actual waterfront and the walkway itself. Well, one place where you can tell there's a lot of damage from a higher elevation to this walkway is behind Irving. We're having serious issues, we rebuilt the walkway, and that one section alone, we've rebuilt three times this year, including today. Any rainstorm is now washing the walkway out over there. So it may not have a direct impact, but what happens up here has a direct impact on the waterfront walkway.
How about the marina, does this impact the marina at all?
It would, it can also, uh, impact the town dock as well, do we need to, uh, raise the structures, do, uh, when the tide gets to a certain level and we're in season, do the stanchions at the marina get too much that it buckles? I.e., uh, four years ago, excuse me, five years ago, um, we were at an elevated high tide and we had a spout come from over Fort Knox and all that had a major impact and destroyed a lot of the docks on the sea dock, which required immediate attention on Fourth of July.
Well, and remind me, you were fighting to get money from a lawsuit or something, uh, for the Penobscot River? And where's the status on that?
Uh, we are, um, so the town applied for two sources of funding for the improvements to the Bucksport town dock. Uh, we successfully received four point one million dollars through congressional directed spending through Senator Collins's office and the Department of HUD. And, uh, we have that money in hand, um, from a report that was approved back in twenty nineteen, we had, uh, state and, um, state, um, permitting and everything taken care of, my intentions were to not go through the federal, just because we knew about the lawsuit, but the lawsuit has gone on. Um, I, I did inform the folks from the Estuary Trust that we did receive the four point one million dollars from Senator Collins's offices. However, at the time that when we applied, um, through the lawsuit, uh, through Senator Collins's office, time has passed. Firms who do this type of work are extremely busy, so, uh, supply and demand, cost goes up there, um, wages have gone up, supply costs have gone up. And, um, going through federal funding, we've actually had to have environmental permits done now, uh, which we're in that phase right now. HUD is doing that on behalf of the town with the section fifty review, um, so that's gonna push the program out further. And also, uh, to disturb the, the, uh, riverbed, you're looking at a timeframe of November to April, we won't be able to put this out to bid this year. Um, cause we're still going through the federal permitting, so that's gonna push the project out yet another year. So we're looking at the, uh, additional costs because the project is going to take longer to be covered. We met with folks from the trust last week, uh, we've explained that, we've also explained that when the cruise ships are here, they're using generators and we like it to be more clean, so we'd like to, um, include, uh, electrical upgrades to the marina so that we can provide that as a service to them as well. So we were not rejected, um, they are waiting, uh, from us, I have a meeting with the engineer, uh, next Monday, uh, and the harbor master. The three of us are gonna have a meeting and we need to provide updated costs and the, um, and the impacts. So prior to the mill closing, if you weren't aware, one of the first things we dealt with was the, the town dock. When it was originally built, it was built at sixty feet long and its primary purpose was to support fisheries. This zone has been closed way before I moved here, twenty-one years ago, the dock was expanded, um, there used to be a lot more moorings. Now, as you can tell, the dock had was expanded to two hundred and some odd feet and then again to its current three hundred and fifteen feet, which we personally sit at. And now it's used for transient boats and not just for lobstermen to unload and then go to Yvonne. Now it is, we courage overnight stays, we have a catamaran that's been here since, it comes each year up from Texas and it's been here since COVID. Right now the boat's down at Front Street Shipyard, that's why you don't see it right now, but we've seen an increase in cruise ships, we've gone from eight to ten a year, this year's schedule has twenty-four. They've stopped coming here with seer buses and buzzing their boats down to Bar Harbor. They, uh, come with their own personal buses and take them to the fort because the stay is less than one day. So the town sees, uh, fees for the use of the dock, the local businesses are seeing more of the passengers because they're not being shuttled to Bar Harbor. Now they are spending part of the day at the fort and the fort is realizing real profits from.
This, that was one of my questions is, what's the, you know, economic impact of the, on the town of like welcoming all these cruise ships? I mean, I know that they come in on Sundays, a lot of things are closed, I know, they're not anymore, not more.
No, we, that was, one of the requests was, uh, different days, they come in Thursdays, so they'll be here sort of, I guess, six.
Thursday, I see them on Thursdays, yeah.
Um.
Rich, I'm sorry if I missed it, but the work associated with Dick was talking about that Susan Collins, what, what kinda work is that again?
Four point one billion dollars to upgrade the town dock, the town dock is currently three hundred fifteen foot wooden seasonal dock.
Okay.
This will become a four hundred foot concrete year-round dock.
Okay, thank you.
With additional floats, uh, with a hundred twenty foot ADA access.
Okay.
Um, with, with switchbacks and all the legalities because when you, when you wanna do something, you do it right and you do it for everybody and that was our plan from the very beginning.
Okay, thanks, and I missed that part.
Do you anticipate use in the winter?
You, you actually can, we, we've been monitoring for the last five years the ice down here and we have not seen any, any ice buildup, no, nothing of significance. One, we're not afraid at, at this point that the ice would cause any damage to the new docking system, but you do have fishermen who, uh, could potentially utilize, uh, that dock and instead of storing it, put it on the backside of the dock or the front side, cause we're gonna have slips on the backside of the new dock. Also, um, it could be used in, uh, certain situations, uh, if something were to happen over at the bridge. You'd have a place where you can, instead of having to deal with, uh, the Verona landing, where you could have the town boat or the firefighter's boat and utilize this year-round dock, cause right now what they have to do, if something were to happen with someone at the bridge, they have to put in over there, deal with the conditions, which it's not quite easy, have everybody congregated in one smaller area versus a big parking lot with a dock and make it easier for, um, for our first responders.
The bridge, I, I'm not, I don't follow this, I'm dense.
Well, they haven't put the safety, uh, the safety fence up on the bridge yet.
Oh.
So we've had unfortunately people jumping off of the bridge, so they, they're, it's not seasonality on when they do. So when we have to go out and recover the bodies via fireboat or the town boat or, or whatever is going out there to get them, if someone were to jump in the winter, the town boat potentially could be on the dock and, and we can see that. The financial impact we're seeing all of the other seasons, uh, with this dock is the fact that we don't have to pay five thousand dollars to, in the, to take out these docks, um, and put them in annually, uh, we're seeing, uh, financial, um, gains from the cruise ships per square foot, we also take their trash, four dollars per bag for trash.
What's the square foot docking fee or the, whatever the per foot?
I believe that, I believe it's three dollars for a cruise ship per, per foot, so, and it's, uh, two, uh, there's three different, there are four different boats and all four of them are different sizes. You got one that's one eighty-five, one that's two fifteen, and then the two new ones I haven't seen. You got one that's one eighty-five, one that's two fifteen, and then the two new ones I haven't seen yet, so I don't know what those sizes are. So yeah, we've never built them.
So. I think you left the phone on. My dog's calling me.
I did. Yeah. Or I should say anything, yes.
So anyway, thirteenth, are we gonna go as a a body or?
Oh, come on.
Are you gonna um, represent us or?
What's that?
How do you wanna do this for the thirteenth?
Uh, I don't believe I'm gonna be in town on the thirteenth. I think I'll be embedded in a North Main Wood somewhere.
I mean, I I'm intending to come. Whoever else is for the boys intending to be here.
I encourage the board and anyone from the public to to come to this, cause it, cause it is important. A lot of people have their different ideas of what they would conceive of walkway.
But you don't need us as a group to be represented.
No, no, it was a simple invitation to y'all in case you hadn't seen it. I mean, it's plastered on the doors, it's been on the website for weeks, it's been in the newspaper recently, it's been on Facebook for a week, it's garnered a lot, it's garnered some attention and feedback.
You know, the best place to have put it would be Terry Grindel's sign. That was that was the best way to get the word out in this community.
That was.
I I would agree with you, Mark. I think that was a.
I mean, really, it was, that was the one place that that if you didn't read the paper or.
It really was.
People don't go to the website unless they got a reason to go to the website. That Terry Grindel's sign, you that really like let you know what was going on. That's 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 probably what I'm gonna miss most.
Maybe you can get them to put a new one on.
A new sign? Well, they haven't yet.
I know. Talk to them.
Um, the other, the other thing I'd like to let you know about, I'm gonna be attending this tomorrow. It's a shoreline stabilization workshop being held in Surrey tomorrow night at seven o'clock. It's kind of a first come, first served R S V P, so I got the email and five minutes later I did reserve. So anyway, the Surrey Conservation Commission is sponsoring a panel discussion featuring Maine experts on shoreline erosion and stabilization, what we've been dealing with here. Um, Andrew McCullough of Andrew McCullough Engineering, he's the gentleman who engineered our fishing pier and our town dock. Uh, Nicholas Whiteman from the Maine Geological Survey and John McLean with the Maine Department of Environmental Protection will be there to answer questions, so I will be attending that as well and I'll be sharing information with Luke.
The, I had a question about next week's meeting. You said thirty-eight people have done the survey. Like, how many people do you anticipate to come to this meeting?
I'd like to see the whole room full, but I um.
What if, what if it's more people than we can accommodate here?
That that would be a first and I would be ecstatic and then we probably have to, when we got to the breakout session.
Yeah.
We'd make it work in this building.
If, I was going to say, I don't know if it's doable, but I mean, if there was really strong people, I still have a key to the auditorium. I mean, it up in B-Pac, so.
Well, we will be recording, we will be recording this and.
That's that's also said they have, they have TV recording.
They got the YouTube, yep.
Yes, I mean, I I have to get Jim Morale to like, but uh, I don't know who does the recording here, but um, any case. Um, if if the turnout were that big, I don't know.
I'd love it if it were. Those are the, those are two of the many things that are going on in our, in our office. Do you have any questions for me or what what else we've got going on in town or anything? Those are a couple of different things, the C D S and the, so we have not been declined from the Estuary Trust. They're giving us the opportunity to come up with new revised numbers of what we need and what the impacts are on uh, on on the community. Uh, cause they do recognize that Bucksport was very uh, impacted by by the mercury and it shut down what the actual dock was built for, which was for the fishermen. It it wasn't built for transient motors. And that's changed because the town had to redefine itself when that happened, i.e. when the when the mill shut down. Same scenario on a hugely different scale, but it's similar in nature.
Yeah.
No dredging associated with what you just talked about?
No, so because we're gonna have the hundreds, um, this is back to the grain. So with the hundred twenty foot gangway, um, the pilings that you see there now, the H piles, those are, those are gonna come out. And it's actually, uh, the dock itself is gonna sit out further in the water. The the dock, not the pier, but the dock itself, which will put us in even deeper water as well, which is a bonus, which is why we can then put boats on the backside of that dock. It has some slips. So and those slips would be the wooden that we have presently. So the plan would be to um, use the frontward facing and the um, and the backside uh, uh, on the main for the boats in the winter if we see that traffic. Cause one thing you you have to realize in the area as well is a lot of the uh, boat storage locations, boatyards in the area that serves these wo- are out of business. Uh, winter port's no longer active. I mean, your choices are uh, down in Belfast, Front Street Shipyard. Um, and then under forty foot, um, Dave Myland has a place up in our industrial park that's under forty foot. There's limited to no choices for forty foot or larger.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Anyone else wishing to speak under the limited public forum? Seeing none, I will close the limited public forum and we move on to item nine, discussion. Anything that we need to discuss?
Is there any update on um, just continuing struggles with AIM and, you know, dump? No. Okay. The um, this is kind of a public thing. I know we're redoing the water main on my street. That I mean, which doesn't have anything else. I'll I'll leave that for another time, but um.
That you'd have to ask main water. I don't know anything about it.
Yeah, I know. It's um.
Well, you're not gonna sleep late, that's for sure.
No.
They work in early in the morning.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they they get going. It's, I was blocked in. They trenched out in front of my driveway completely, like I had to get out. I I wouldn't, it's a fine, I understand. It's a cost of doing business. I would have appreciated a heads up the day before.
Yeah. I'm surprised they didn't really, but yeah.
And so that and the water shut offs.
That could be an issue too.
I have to say, this is an unpleasant.
Yes.
Unpleasant thing that you have to deal with.
I will relay the message. First I've heard of it. I didn't know anything about it.
Well, anyway. I mean, the guys are pleasant, but um.
Nothing any further on? There's a lot across the street?
Uh, just what I told you at the beginning, the twenty-seven main engineer called me.
Oh, okay.
They're plugging along and we expect to see an application maybe next month, but probably October.
Has anything happened with the Thai restaurant?
You know, I hadn't seen anybody working there in a week or two and then I, they were people up there working this morning.
Okay, I was kinda kinda taking, having Thai food by the summer, but um.
I don't know. Like, I told them a month and a half, two months ago that those stairs out there didn't meet code and needed to be re- repaired or changed and they said they understood and they haven't been changed or touched. They haven't taken them any further, but they also haven't made the changes, so I don't know what's going on there. They're seeming very slow and unresponsive, but.
The um, the only other thing I have is, um, I know we don't have this um, yet. Um, has there been any discussion with the town council about um, vacant properties and um, putting putting some sort of um, you know, you have a couple of years to do something with it, sell it, develop it, use it, or then we begin to fine you?
I I know we discussed that. I haven't done anything with that yet.
I mean, I like I like the old Methodist church. I mean, what a shame. That's right, that that's bringing people's property values down in the neighborhood. To have a property like that just go to ruin and nobody can do anything, cause someone can just pay the taxes indefinitely. I I find that to be um, a frustration and if that's something, I mean, I don't I don't know how other people don't, aren't really interested in that, but um.
Yep, and and I don't, I don't mean to make light of that. It's just I've had so much on my plate with these legal issues and things that it's taken a backseat and probably shouldn't have, but unfortunately, there's only one of me and if this stuff would go away, it would help me be able to do things to help people that I'd like to be doing, but it's just unfortunate that this is the way it is.
Is there enough work that Dick could hire, like a second one of you, some of that you can supervise? Does it warrant that?
I mean, these legal issues are gonna go away at some point. Um, so I don't, I don't know how to answer that.
Okay, just throw it up there. I mean, it's.
I get it, but like I said, you know, some weeks it takes up a whole forty hours and then other weeks it's ten to fifteen and this week I'm hoping it's none, but we'll see. Um, and it just, it's frustrating, cause there's things I wanna be doing, you know, there's violations that need to be dealt with, there's people I wanna help and there's things like what you just brought up that I wanna bring to the council and it's just, there's only so many hours in in a week and.
That's my question. Maybe consider adding, giving you some help, you know, for whatever, like increase your apartment by another person or something like that. I mean, it's.
I don't see that happening, but we did talk about, um, it's a public knowledge, I guess it is. We've talked about, and I think the council talked about, when they, Jackie's retiring in December and uh, George has taken over as clerk and when they hire somebody new upstairs, they're talking about making that person at least half-time um, as an assistant for me, Rich and Caitlin. Um, so that might help with some of that. Answering phone calls and doing some of the the busy work, gathering copies of permits and tax cards and stuff for people so that.
It does a step.
I know, but it's, yeah.
But you're on full-time here anyway. I I know you work full-time, but.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine. Yeah.
So you you don't, you you're still doing your other two jobs?
I work about eighty hours a week. Yeah. Yeah.
And then you run the gun shop.
No.
No.
That's close.
Give that up.
And it was just not right, so. Anything else? I will try and make that a priority.
I mean, it's, I'm not complaining here. I'm just, I'm just taking it and asking.
No, it's a legitimate question and and I'll bring it to the council and see what they think, so.
Any more discussion on anything? Item ten, adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Do we need any discussion on that? Seeing none, those in favor?